And sir, you are live.
Good. Would you call the meeting's order? Are we complying with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Could you please take the role, please?
Certainly. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Harkins? Mr. Harkins? Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Becker? Mr. Lennox? Mr. Stanford?
Here.
And Mayor McCann?
Here. And I see Mr. Hawkins is here now.
Yeah, here.
And Mr. Lennox is too. Mrs. Becker is not, sir.
Thank you very much. Will you please join in need of pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the five states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Fortunately today to give you a vocation, Reverend Dees is here. Dr. Dees, thank you very much for joining us, and welcome to the community.
It's a blessing to be here with you. Ready. Let us pray. Holy God, we thank you for the men and women who serve in our government. We ask that you please remind them this day and in the days ahead why they've decided to dedicate their lives to this significant work of public service. Use their commitment to encourage them. Give them peace when this work takes them away from their families and loved ones and when those times of serving are challenging. We just ask that you grant them, oh God, wisdom and courage. Help them to see joy in the day-to-day task and when they are called to make difficult decisions for their constituents and for all concerned. We just ask that you guide their hearts. Be with them in this day and then the days ahead. We have spoken to you, oh God, and now we ask that you speak to us. It is in your name we pray and give thanks. Amen.
Amen. Looking forward to seeing you tomorrow, Doctor. Okay, approval of the minutes? I will approve the minutes.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise their right hand, please. Thank you very much. With the record showed, this Becker is here. He reports with town manager.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, mayor and council and members of the community. I'm going to turn this over to Josh, but just as a little bit of a background. We know that we're constitutionally obligated to undertake a really a redrawing of our wards in response to any new census data. As we know, on August 12th, a little more than a month or so ago, we received the 2020 census data update. Josh is here today to really let you know what that means for us, what the process is moving forward. And it's very important to know that we have contacted the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. It used to be called the Office of Research and Statistics for the State Budget and Control Board. And so their new office, pretty much the same, the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office has been contacted to help us through the redistricting conversation and perhaps changes that we might need to make. It's also important to know that this is the same office that helped us last time in 2011 with the same. So with that, turn it over to Josh, and I'm here to also answer some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando, members of town council. The, within the memo that you have within your packet, just kind of want to highlight a couple of items that you understand what the process is going to be and working with the Office of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. They are going to take the census data that's provided from the federal government and work directly with you all and the public to understand the process that we have to go through in order to redraw our ward boundaries for town council members so that we comply with all of the applicable constitutional provisions that apply to this process. Within that memo, there was a couple of attachments that I think are very important to look at because they kind of outline how the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office is going to approach this process and kind of some of the steps that they're going to engage in. One of the first ones is going to be coming down and meeting with you all and meeting with the public to kind of really go over this process in detail to explain the ins and outs of how they will be going about taking the census data, how they will be applying it to ensure equal representation across the ward districts. Very importantly, how we're going to go about identifying existing communities of interest so that as we redraw our district boundaries, we make sure that to the extent that we can, we keep those communities of interest connected. And then ultimately prepare draft redrawn district maps for council to consider. So all of that process is essentially in keeping with the way that we've redistricted previously and the way that we're required to under the law in order to be able to come forward with redrawn maps. The one thing that I do not have for you just yet is a date. We are working with the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office to identify a time for them to come down and begin making that presentation and to have those conversations. However, we are towards the back of the pack a little bit, primarily because we do not have any municipal elections this November. So the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office is working with a number of different jurisdictions, some of whom do have elections coming up here in a matter of weeks. And so they're kind of working with those organizations first and foremost, and they will be working with us. We just don't have that same level of priority because our elections aren't going to take place until November of 2022. So as soon as we have a date and time kind of identified with them, we're going to let you know so that they're going to come down and start making those presentations, getting feedback from you all as a council, getting feedback from the public, and then ultimately at some point in time after that, delivering a proposed set of redrawn district boundaries. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Alex?
Yes, afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Orlando and Mr. Gruber. I guess I'll start with, I can appreciate the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs, you know, setting the guidelines. But at the moment, who is working on this for us right now?
So internally, we have staff within our GIS, our Geographic Information Systems Department. They're the ones that essentially maintain the town maps. And at the heart of this process, that is what we are working with, is maps and boundaries. And so the technical staff from the town standpoint is folks from within that department.
And do you currently have in hand the updated census data for Hilton Head?
We have it for the county and we have it as a municipality. So we know that based upon the information that we had an increase of 562 people from 2010 to 2020 as far as a census number goes. And I want to make that clear, that's just what's reported in the census. So those are known kind of variables. But as far as the individual, yeah, the, not the zip codes, but the census districts, yes. Yes, population changes at that level, we do not have that information yet. We are expecting to receive that information from the federal government on or about September 30th.
And what about the change in population? I understand the increase, but how it has fluctuated between ethnic groups?
Again, we know that in the higher level, so we know the demographic information for the town as a municipal boundary and for the county, but we don't know it down to the individual wards or individual census districts.
Okay. So these documents that you provided for us, they speak to communities of interest, I guess the way that they define them, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we ourselves as a town have defined the communities of interest?
Yes, the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office will ask you as a governmental body to take some kind of formal action to identify the communities of interest that you believe are present on the island as part of their redistricting exercise.
And is our GIS department currently working on defining that?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm sure that we can work with council members if there's any questions in terms of kind of coming up with that information.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. You answered the questions to the best of your knowledge, and I am being very, very intentional with my questions, of course, okay? And not to belabor the point, but I think that this is something that we need to discuss as a council. Not just rely on an outside, although it is the deemed agency, they do not know our municipality as well as we do, okay? So some sort of community involvement. Before they get here, I can appreciate the fact that we're at the back of the line. That gives us more time to get ourselves together. Many of you probably know that my ward, Ward 1, is the most diverse ward on Hilton Head, okay? And I don't want to make any assumptions as to where the population increase is, but after learning that there's been an increase in the Hispanic population countywide, maybe there's an increase here on Hilton Head. And not being certain where those individuals are located just leans us to not be able to answer the question firmly as to where our groups of interest located here on Hilton Head. So thank you, Josh, for the update. But I think that we've got a lot of work to do here. We don't want to be accused here on Hilton Head as to be jeremanding to any degree. And when you start to take into consideration the way Hilton Head lays out with all of the planned unit developments, that makes the exercise even more tricky, right? So I think this one needs our attention, ladies and gentlemen. So again, I appreciate the initial report, but I expect that we should further this conversation before the officials show up.
And you have a question for Josh?
Yeah, just an observation. In our discussions around the local option sales tax, the number of people on the island was 37,002, something like that. And I think that in our plan document, it was referring to our population as 39,700, close to 40,000. I gather that the redistricting will be on the 37,000 and not the 39,000. So in a sense, we've lost a couple of thousand residents. Maybe they're non-voting residents, I'm not sure. So just, just an observation.
Tammy?
I'm just curious because I was open to waiting to hear how this unfolds and understanding that we don't have an election this year, that we would be at the, at the end of getting attention with regard to how this all plays out. But defining community of interest, as I understood it, was, was not necessarily as a, as an ethnic or anything along those lines. It really had more to do with, with truly interests and not personal attributes. So I just want to, I wonder if there's an answer to that. But I don't want to create something that there, that there isn't. I think we're one community and one Ireland, and we ought to see each other all that way. So I'm just interested in how that actually, if you have any information, otherwise I'm happy.
Yep, no, I do. So within the documents, there's also a Q and A because this is a frequently asked question that comes up. So if a community of interest is not a set standard for defining districts, but is considered a part of the traditional redistricting principles, a community of interest could be a neighborhood, a community, a group of people that has a common policy concerns as well as social and economic interests and would benefit from being maintained in a single district. Another way of understanding community of interest is simply a way for a community to tell its own story about what residents share in common and what makes it unique when compared to surrounding communities.
That's what I thought I read. Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, Mr. Orlando, any more?
I'll follow up to that. This is important. It is intentional. As you'll know, in a draft strategic plan that we'll soon coordinate on in October, this is one of the strategies that staff will implement. And, and to the comments heard, it is definitely, we need external help and there's a lot of work to do internally as well as within the community. So please know that we are taking this and prioritizing it as an intentional exercise, even though the population hasn't changed all that much, but we will take very careful steps to get there as well. Moving along, we have some good news to share. It shouldn't be a surprise, but Municipal Association of South Carolina presented to the Town of Hilton Head Island a 2021 Municipal Achievement Award for the Rehabilitation of Stormwater Pump Stations. I saw Mr. Barano from Municipal. So there you are. I see you, sir. Thank you for being here with us. In a second, I will turn it over to Charlie Barano with Municipal Association, and he will also turn it over to Eric Ladd I see on there, holding what looks like the Ryder Cup, but it's not. It's actually the Municipal Association Achievement Award. It's for an investment in our community, a $4.2 million investment paid for by stormwater utility fees. And it was for the Jarvis Creek and Lawton Canal pump stations. The good news about it is not only that we won the award, of course, it's always nice to be recognized and an amazing job to everybody, Eric included, and Jeff Buckaloo somewhere around here as well, and a whole bunch others. But we've really, you know, just based upon the information and the strategy behind it, we reduced the potential flooding for more than 3,500 properties by investing in these pump stations. So congratulations to Hilton Head Island. Mr. Barano, if you had some things to say, words to say, and I know that you also have a, we also have a short video to watch, which I think will, will tell the tale much better than I am. And with that, Charlie.
Well, good afternoon, mayor and council. Again, on behalf of the association, congratulations to the Town of Hilton Head Island. You are to be commended for your Public Works Achievement Award. And if that video is queued up, I believe we're ready to see it.
Okay. Hey.
Public Works category, Town of Hilton Head Island. Stormwater pump stations serve as a vital part of flood control for barrier island communities such as Hilton Head Island that have low-lying watersheds influenced by tides. The Jarvis Creek and Lawton Canal pump stations, the town's two oldest stations, needed major system upgrades as evidenced by service interruptions, including failures during Hurricane Matthew and mounting repair costs. After identifying the station's deficiencies, staff worked with the original pump manufacturer and a contractor to create a cost-effective improvement plan to improve reliability and protect against flooding from storms.
The pump stations were constructed, one in around 1990, and then the other three between 2000, 2005. None of these pump stations that we would rely on in an extreme event had ever been necessary to actually be called to duty until Matthew in 2016. And then again, a year later with Irma in 2017. So that's when we got our first real stress test with these pump stations. And there was a lot we learned when they actually came into working to protect us from a storm. So the things that went wrong, the things didn't go quite as expected, and the things that worked well were all taken into account. And it helped us with the lessons learned to decide how we could improve the facilities as well as doing rehabilitation.
The town undertook a more than $4.2 million rehabilitation of the stations. Rehabilitation of the pump stations included replacing electrical control systems, installing new and refurbished generators, overhauling submersible pumps, and upgrading remote monitoring. Upgrades to the power systems, gates, debris screens, and sediment dredging also aim to reduce the risk of failure. The Jarvis Creek project reduces the potential for flood losses for more than 1,700 properties in its watershed, while the Lawton Creek project does the same for 1,800 properties in its watershed. The town also implemented a new web-based asset management program that will help efficiently document maintenance work, helping it manage and plan for ongoing costs. Funding for the $4.2 million effort came entirely from property-based stormwater utility fees.
Infrastructure is for the protection and welfare of the people living in this town and our guests that come into here. It's extremely important because of the climate changes today and the flooding that we replace the old pipes that we have that are 20 and 30 years old. This is a big investment for us, but it's a very important investment for the health and welfare of this community here along the way. People that live here expect us to do everything we can to protect them, and this large investment is to take care of that.
The projects are vital to the town's strategic plans and efforts to protect the community from rising sea levels. The upgrades help protect more than 3,500 properties, providing long-term, efficient flood control and stormwater management.
So again, on behalf of the association, Municipal Association of South Carolina, congratulations. I believe Mr. Ladd is there holding your trophy awards. So again, look forward to your submission for next year.
Charlie, I'm glad that you said that because I was going to tell you, thank you to you and the Municipal Association as well, but, but know that this isn't our last trophy, so more to come. We're excited. Thanks for sharing your time with us this afternoon.
Good to see everybody.
What trophy was here?
It is.
What's that? What's the trophy that's here?
Eric's at the trophy right there. I don't know if you can all see the trophy, but it'll be displayed prominently and proudly at town hall. So if you're in the building, let me know and I'll show it to you. Next, we have our bi-annual update from Ms. Patsy Bryson, who is the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Bryson? Oh. We might be on mute.
From, there we go. Okay. Yeah?
Good afternoon.
Great. Good afternoon to all. And thank you very much for the opportunity to report on behalf of the Board of Zoning Appeals, or BZA, for the first half of 2021. And also want to thank the town council members who attend and observe our meetings. We appreciate you checking in on us. Also want to thank BZA colleagues, also applicants to the BZA and the town staff for their preparation, professionalism, and patience with us as we go through our processes. You have before you a written report on our work for the first six months of this year. Again, another busy time. During the first six months of 2021, we held six virtual meetings. Five of those were regular meetings and one special meeting. We considered and heard eight variance requests, one appeal, and no special exception request. A summary of those actions is included in the written report. And I know you have a very long meeting, so I'm certainly not going to read all those to you. In addition to that work, being a quasi-judicial board, we are responsible for due process, both procedural and substantive. In order to carry out that responsibility, we are continuing, continuing a review of our rules of procedure, working with staff and looking at best practices of other BZAs in the state as well as the model rules of procedure from the Municipal Association of South Carolina. And we expect that staff will be reporting to us soon on recommended revisions to our rules of procedure to make us more efficient in order to deliver procedural due process. With regard to substantive due process, we ask the staff attorney to report to us each month on appeals from our BZA to circuit court in order to determine whether or not we need to make any changes either in our procedural or our substantive considerations. Staff attorney is doing that on a monthly basis. We also ask her to report to us about any changes in South Carolina case law or statutes, which would mean that we would need to make some changes in either our process by the substantive part or the procedural part of our processes. Also, the members of the BZA completed their educational requirements for the year as of June 30 of this year. The trainings that we are having now are more in line with the processes and the law that we need to apply. We ask for that, and the staff has responded. In addition, on a monthly basis, we receive a report from the staff on waivers granted by the staff under the LMO, the LMO requirements. And we, in July of 2020, received a report from the staff of waivers granted since 2017. And after receiving that report, we sent it to the Planning Commission, asking the Planning Commission if there need to be any amendments considered to the LMO in light of the numbers of waivers granted. Also, during this year, the Public Planning Committee of the Town Council considered waivers and asked for staff for an update and afforded to members of that committee the report that the BZA received in 2020. The BZA had previously recommended some amendments to the LMO, and we do have staff reports on a monthly basis on the status of those suggestions that we made. We continue to look at that. And at the September meeting of the BZA, we have on our agenda consideration of the small lot sizes that we're seeing and the number of variance requests that have come before us to determine whether or not we would make any further recommendations with regard to amendments to the LMO. That is a summary of my report on behalf of the BZA, and I'd be happy to address any questions or comments that town council members may have.
Thank you very much for your work, and we really appreciate it. Mark?
Thank you, Patsy, as well. So that concludes my report.
Okay. For the members of council, are there any general reports from members of council? Mr. Brown?
Yes. Did we tie this names? I'll go first if that's all right.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended a meeting at Holy Catholic Church on Monday a week ago. And the meeting was facilitated by the Deepwell Project and the Immigration Coalition. And the topic was the, what we are commonly referring to as the Rollers Trailer Park. And many don't know the reason why it's called Rollers because longtime family on Hilton Head, the Rollers family, own that property years back. It's changed hands several times, but it is the property on Marshland Road that is currently being sent through the process of asking for a rezoning to redevelop it. There's about 40 some odd homes there. This meeting was attended by, by my count, at least 60 folks. More than just Hispanics, okay? There were, there were white people they also that, as I learned after the meeting by talking with them, had been living in that trailer park since the 90s. But the majority of the attendees were Hispanic. And they were families. It really started to touch me that there were so many young children there that, It really started to touch me that there were so many young children there that, you know, at some point, may take one of our places here on this council. So I've got grave concerns because one of the owners of the proposed rezoning has already stated that even if the property doesn't sell, he no longer desires to operate as a mobile home park. I'm bringing this to our attention because civic groups like Deepwell, Community Foundation of Low Country, Low Country Gullah, all working together to try to find places for these families to move on Hilton Head. And the question was asked out loud to the individuals in that meeting, how many of you want to continue to live on Hilton Head? And every hand in the room went up. So I can appreciate the efforts of those civic agencies, but I'm now challenging us as a town to also assist. And I'm going to give a few examples, and I'm going to move on, Mr. Mayor. These folks are in need of land to move their mobile homes. And if we can't find land readily and available, we have some as a town of Hilton Head. The infrastructure cost involved in preparing a site to move a mobile home, we've got money set aside to help with that. And this one, I just have to share this one because a family showed up at the meeting with their plaque. And one sister was living in Rollers Trailer Park, the other one was living on Aiken Place. And the sister on Aiken Place has .46 acres, if I'm not mistaken. Got one unit there in a zoning district that calls for four units per acre. You do the math. At this point, she can only put one unit there. There's plenty enough room for her to put another unit, but because we have turned down a recommendation that came out of the Gullah Gitchi Task Force to round up in those cases, that's just one family that we couldn't help. So again, I'm challenging us to get involved in this one because us losing those folks as a part of our community will be a disaster. And I'd like to thank Mr. Orlando for providing translator at the last Planning Commission meeting. That topic involves so many Spanish-speaking folks, and it's just a level of confidence when you can understand what's going on in your own language. And also would like to thank Mr. Orlando for assigning Jamie Latko to this project as a liaison, okay? And I just ask that Jamie is not only collecting information as far as what's needed to make this transition smooth, but also give us a report along the way so that we, as a council, can consider any policy decisions that could help with the cause. With that being said, I will, I will, I will close with saying that as we go through this process, just imagine if it was you that was being asked to move and could do nothing about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other general reports?
Yes, Mayor.
The Sames?
Yeah, I will piggyback on what Alex was saying. Virtually every day, we on council are reminded of the worsening workforce housing situation on Hilton Head, witness the discussion of Roller Trailer Park, but also the transition of full-time rentals to short-term rentals. We're all aware of the bidding war on houses. But today, I heard a story of a young couple moving to the island with some expectation that they had been offered a rental unit in an apartment complex, and when they arrived on the island, they were told, we are now bidding on that rent roll. So the price of rentals are now being auctioned in effect. And I just wonder, not only what that means to that one couple, but what does it mean when the renewals come up? And so I think that what this points out is that our housing stock on this island is at an unsustainable, out-of-balance state. And unless we attack it in the same way that we are attacking the bridge corridor issue, in other words, making it a top priority, there's no way we can turn this around. It is only going to get worse because of the pressures of off-island and the lack of housing on the island. Thank you.
Any other general reports? The only thing I have is that this month is National Hispanic Month, and the celebration is in a week or two of shelter calls. We will send out more information on it. Okay, report to the Low Country Area Transportation Study. This is Stanford.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, to refresh everyone, this is the federally mandated organization that makes transportation planning for the entire region, and I am the town's representative on that board. They are beginning a process of a long-range plan to study and plan for future transportation needs on Hilton Head Island, but more importantly, as on the entire region. And so they recently had a public hearing, which was one of these hearings where you go in and you put ideas down on a map. I was representative, I was representative of the town there, and we had two staff members from the town as well. So with the staff members there, the town was well represented. And so we will continue to monitor that and assure that transportation planning takes into account the needs of Hilton Head Island moving forward. Then, just as a matter of update, there was no discussion at the recent meeting of the last board concerning the corridor 278. That's my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Report to the Low Country Council of Governments, Ms. Becker.
We haven't had a meeting since my last report. We do have a meeting on the 23rd, so next council meeting, I'll have something to share.
Report to the South Carolina Flood Commission, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Thank you for the assignment, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
I thank Krista for the mountain of information that she has provided me. This is a commission that comes under the auspices of the governor of South Carolina. And it was very interesting going through this information. They've assigned 10 task forces. I won't read them all off to you, but items like artificial reef systems, smart water and dam security, infrastructure and shoreline armoring, and our very own Mayor McCann is a part of the stakeholder task force. The intent here was to, you know, bring awareness to the potential of us being so prone to flooding and try to put in some countermeasures along the way, okay? And just to be very brief with this, I found that, you know, Hilton Head itself is one of the leaders in that area. Thus the award that we just received. And one of the most interesting to me was the contribution of dollars to Beach for Nourishment along the coast of South Carolina, where the state, from 2017 to 2019, that was the last report that this committee put out, the state's contribution was somewhere around $31 million. The town of Hilton Head itself, in that same time period, has spent over $40 million. So again, we're definitely a leader in this arena, and we need to continue to be that. I know that there are coastal communities all along the East Coast that are engaging with professionals to make decisions on where they should invest as far as protecting themselves. And I would just offer up that, you know, when we sit down to talk through our strategic plan, that this is one of the topics that we spent a little time on, okay? You can argue all you want with Reverend John Miller, that says that in the next 50 to 60 years, Hilton Head will be completely underwater. But we need to recognize that that, you know, that or some sense of that could be a reality. So there's funding sources out there that can help us with the countering exercises, and I think we need to be taking advantage of them as we have in the past. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you for the assignment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it. Report to the Southern Low Country Regional Board, Ms. Lennox.
Thank you, Mayor. The Soloco Board met August 24th, and the topic was the Regional Housing Trust Fund. The details and presentation are in their final form, and we can expect Eric Greenway, the Beaufort County Administrator, who was the quarterback on this effort, to make a presentation to each one of the impacted municipalities. Next meeting will be next Tuesday, September 28.
Thank you. Our report to the Beaufort County Airport and Audi Board, Ms. Sames?
Thank you, Mayor. Passenger counts, activities at the airport are maintaining their pace, and also, United Airlines announced that it is going to be flying to Washington, D.C., and every, every day throughout the year, not just during the season. Thank you.
Thank you. Report to the Community Service and Public Safety Committee, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be meeting next week on Monday at 9:00 a.m. Among the items of general interest is one of particular interests, and that will be the Main Street Right-A-Way Acquisition, a subject that we've been kicking around for a long time. I encourage my colleagues to tune in. Staff has done a lot of work here and will be coming up with alternatives and cost estimates, and eventually will be leading to a recommendation for consideration. So please stay tuned in. Thank you.
Thank you. Report to the Public Planning Committee, Ms. Sames?
Thank you, Mayor. There was no meeting in August, but there is a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at 9 o'clock to discuss and review the draft short-term rental agreement.
Thank you. Report to the Finance Administrator Committee, Ms. Lennox?
Thank you, Mayor. The F and A Committee met this afternoon at 2 o'clock, and we had two agenda items. The first was the 2022 proposed meeting dates and times, and that was adopted. And the second was an update given by John Troyer on the first two months, July and August of our 2022 fiscal year. We reviewed in some detail the revenues and the expenses and the general fund balance. It was a good report and encouraging that the economy on Hilton Head continues to be resilient.
Thank you, Tom. The Arts Center of Coastal Carolina is celebrating its 25th anniversary. I'd like to congratulate Jeffrey Reeves and his team at the Arts Center for their 25th anniversary. The Arts Center has been a longtime partner with the town, and on behalf of myself and town council, we like many returns of the day. Jeffrey, it's always good to see you, and thank you very much for your work. That's your plaque, and I thank you very much. Wish we could give you one on the plaque, Jeffrey. Thank you of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, town council.
Thank you. Chris, your appearance by citizens?
Yes, sir. Today, we have four citizens signed up to speak, the first being Mr. Hoagland.
Hello?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, afternoon. Skip Hoagland, Windmill Harbor. Town and South Carolina Municipal Association is both in violation of South Carolina FOIA laws. No trophy. Mr. Lennox, this council's ongoing corruption assisting Bill Miles Chamber to illegally be issued and secretly misused tens of millions of hard-earned tax money as hired ATAX-funded DMO is coming to an end. I now demand FOIA ATAX accounting compliance from you, Mr. Lennox, David Ames, and the town lawyers on the millions you just handed to Bill Miles, including all receipts and matching invoices on where these millions have disappeared, including Canada. I want detailed proof that these funds were used legally and provided returns to this entire community in the age of technology. South Carolina Turk just sent a letter to you in this highly dishonest town municipality, and I quote parts of it. Tourism Expenditure Review Committee, Turk, the annual accommodations tax reporting is due by October 1, per the requirements of Section 6-4-10 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. New this year, at the bottom of the reporting form on side A, we ask that you name the 30% recipient nonprofit organization, the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber, but ask for no other information about that organization. A recent Supreme Court ruling filed by me and expert FOIA lawyers Smith and Bender have changed the game. The recent court ruling has been interpreted by our legal counsel to mean the 30% nonprofit organization needs to be approved, and the accounting of those funds must be presented to Turk. We understand this is a bit of a procedural change for all of us. I also expect FOIA for all accounting on the millions of South Carolina PRT matching grants, the hurricane marketing funds, 750,000 plus, Governor McMaster, 1.4 million illegal private COVID relief funding, and tax money used to join the town council as private chamber members quid pro quo. So, Mr. Lennox, I expect my FOIA for all ATAX accounting from Bill Miles by October 1, and will FOIA South Carolina Turk to assure that you sent them the same detailed accounting and nothing is missing. Any further attempt by you, town council, town officials, town lawyers, CPAs, auditors, to continue committing fraud on behalf of Bill Miles and this secret sauce tax scam illegally operated as an IRS 501(c)(6) nonprofit chamber CBB that is co-mangled will only result in forensic audits, and I assume arrests, convictions, and prison like happened in Palm Beach, Florida. Am I clear, Mr. Lennox? David, Alex, Tamara, do you understand where this is headed with this illegal, secret chamber tax scam? Do you understand your risk, all of your risk tied to this fraud? You better all wake up. You better all think about this real hard before you go to sleep tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland.
And think about what's going to happen and how you're going to be questioned and how you're going to answer to this. Am I clear, Mr. Hawkins? Am I clear, Mayor? Mayor McCann, do you?
Sir, the next person to speak is Ms. Jane Joseph. Ms. Joseph?
I'm Jane Joseph, Chairman of the Arts Council of Hilton Head, which works under the direction of Jen McEwen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. In 2014, yet another group of citizens gathered to advocate for the town of Hilton Head Island to do more to support the vibrant arts and cultural organizations on the island. The town leaders listened and created the Arts and Cultural Strategic Planning Committee to research and develop recommendations to make Hilton Head Island an arts destination. The committee demonstrated how arts and culture improves our quality of life and is a powerful economic driver. The recommendations were adopted, and two years later, in 2017, we assessed over 100 candidates for a new position, Office of Cultural Affairs Director. In August 2017, Jen McEwen joined the town staff. The progress since then has been amazing. I want to thank town council and staff for taking town support from just acknowledging the value of arts and culture. from just acknowledging the value of arts and culture to our community, to supporting it with resources. This was a visionary step with very positive results. Within the first year, Culture HHI was branded and began providing a new level of community awareness of cultural events through its website and newsletter. People who never knew what was going on were suddenly in the know and showing up. The Americans for the Arts Impact Study for Hilton Head Island was a major initiative which documented the tremendous role that the arts play in our economy and provides an important benchmark to measure our progress. There have been many great programs around town, the Lantern Parade, mural painting, wrapping construction fences, and much more. But to me, the best part of the OCA's contribution has been to bring arts and culture to a much broader and diverse audience of residents and tourists. I look forward to seeing the new plan that you will see later today roll out over the next three years. Four years of working closely with Jen McEwen have shown me a level of creativity, competence, and energy that are extremely special. I believe that we are very fortunate to have her leading the OCA and as a part of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Our next citizen to speak is Michael Marks, sir. Mr. Marks?
Mr. Michael Marks.
Mr. Marks, go ahead.
Are we here?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Two members of council, town manager and assistant town manager. My name is Michael Marks. I'm a twenty-year resident of the island here. I retired in two thousand and fourteen after a thirty-two-year career in the arts and culture field, specifically in the management of museums. My last duty station was here at the Coastal Discovery Museum where I was involved with the development and the implementation of the master plan to transition the museum over to the Honeyhorn property. Today, I would like to address council with regards to the public art portion of the strategic, art strategic plan that you folks have in front of you for consideration today. As a volunteer, as a citizen volunteer, I've been active in the establishment of the public art collection for Hilton Head Island, primarily as a board member for the Community Foundation of the Low Country. From a historical perspective, the public art program began in a partnership between the town of Hilton Head Island and the Community Foundation back in two thousand and twelve, when the Community Foundation, I believe, seeded the program with approximately eighty thousand dollars in funding. Now, through the generous support of the town, of the community foundation, of local businesses, of resident contributors, the collection has now grown to twelve large-scale pieces located throughout the island, all in public places, art that is free and accessible to all people, residents, our visitors, young and old alike. Currently, the value of these pieces, which have been installed throughout the island, have a monetary value of about five hundred thousand dollars. The Community Foundation managed the process up until about two years ago, when it was determined that the establishment of the Office of Cultural Affairs was the more appropriate place for this program to reside. So there was a turning over of the reins, if you will. Under OCA's direction, that includes Jen McEwen's energetic leadership with the support of other citizen volunteers. An additional six public sculpture pieces have been identified and secured, and they will be installed along the Shelter Cove Sculpture Trail as it comes online in the next several months. Hence, the town's public art collection has increased in a very short period of time by fifty percent, which is great. And this is the important point, without increased town funding. So everybody's been doing a really good job at securing these additional pieces at reasonable prices.
Thank you, Mr. Marks.
I'm sorry?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, our final person to address or citizen to address council is Jessie White. Ms. White?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor McCann and Town Council. Jessie White, on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League. We're grateful for the town's wise use or wise decision of bringing on MKSK to study the William Hilton Parkway Corridor and recommend improvements to SCDOT's preferred alternative. MKSK has done a great job and we believe many of their recommendations should be incorporated into the final design, in particular, the narrower lanes, the wider bike and pedestrian pathways with sufficient buffers, the use of smart technology, and improved streetscaping and traffic calming measures. However, even with all of these recommendations, they cannot make up for the core failures that are infecting SCDOT's analysis and their preferred alternative, which are that the scope of the project has been too narrowly defined and it relies on flawed data inputs and assumptions. Taken together, SCDOT has provided an overly simplistic approach that fails to comprehend existing traffic patterns through the corridor. It's illogical to try to solve a traffic congestion problem without an accurate understanding of what's causing that problem in existing traffic conditions. Instead, SCDOT's insular approach will lead to additional long-term traffic problems on arterial road networks throughout the island, excessive and unnecessary additional pavement, and further encroachment into the already burdened stony community. Given the significant public investment in time, resources, and taxpayer funds associated with this project, we urge you to take seriously these fundamental flaws in SCDOT's analysis. We believe that further study is necessary and would offer that the expert traffic engineer we've worked with on this project would be willing to work with staff and MKSK if council expands their scope in order to identify meaningful and comprehensive solutions that look beyond the confines of SCDOT's flawed underlying framework. But at a minimum, council should be unified in insisting, at a minimum, that MKSK's recommendations are incorporated and rejecting SCDOT's plan if it fails to include those recommendations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. White. Sir, that concludes appearance by citizens.
Thank you. Second reading of proposal in this twenty twenty-one dash twenty, the repeal and replacement of the business licensing model ordinance. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And the second, is there any discussion, any discussion on this item? Christian, will you make the roll call for approval?
Certainly, sir. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Hawkins?
Approve.
Mr. Ames?
Approve.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes, for the motion.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you, everybody. New business, first reading of proposal in this twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. I have a motion to approve.
So move for approval.
And the second, the second, any discussion on this item? Mr. Brown?
Yes. There's a lot of items here that speaks to Barker Field, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
And this- Okay, I'm sorry, Alex. Mr. Troyer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
Yes, to the question?
That's correct.
Okay, so are we now in ownership of that field?
No, we're not, not yet.
Okay. That's good enough for me.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Christian, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Hawkins?
Approve.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Consideration Resolution twenty twenty, consolidating annual performance evaluation report. Consideration of resolution approving the community development block grant, consolidated annual performance report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, okay, discussion by council. Any discussion by council? Christian, please call the roll.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you. Consideration Resolution authorizing a town to execute a drainage easement agreement at thirty-nine oh one Main Street. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
The second, okay, discussion on the item. Any discussion on the item? Seeing no discussion for approval, Christian, please call the roll.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you. Consideration for resolution authorizing a town to execute various standard drainage agreements and access drainage and maintenance agreements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, any discussion on this item? Alex?
Yes, so I know we've been actively having conversations with PUDs around these agreements. Does this finish us off?
Councilman Brown, it does not finish us off. I see Jeff Netzinger on here. Jeff has been pointing to finalize these agreements. It's something that Jeff Buckaloo and I have talked about on several occasions, but we will be bringing them to you over time, finalizing the agreements. So I see some momentum. I see some energy on the actual specifics of who's left. I will defer politely to Jeff Netzinger. You're on mute, Jeff. There we go, sir.
So we're in the process of hopefully finishing up standardization of all the agreements with the existing agreement partners. And we're applying those same eligibility rules to any community that meets the qualifications, having a community that has shared planted rights of way that have our communal interest within the private communities. If they meet those, then the drainage that drains those facilities within the community would be eligible for service within the community. So these six here meet the eligibility requirements, the same as for the existing partners. So we're giving them, offering them these new agreements based on the revised standard terms and conditions. There are seventeen to twenty additional communities in our research that looks like they could potentially qualify if they choose to ask for service from the town based on the same set of criteria.
Okay, and as far as, I guess, the makeup of the systems and any of the planned communities, is it safe to say that there could be a mixture of, I guess, responsibility between not only the town, county, in some cases, state when it comes to the effectiveness of the drainage?
I'm not, could you clarify your question? I'm sorry, I don't exactly understand what you're asking.
Okay, so the premise of the exercise is to have a standard agreement between the town and these planned developments, correct?
Yes, it's an extension of service with the fees that we collect to these communities since there's such a large portion of population that is in these private communities and it serves specifically the interests of the shared infrastructure with the community. So in other words, the commonly platted rights of way within the private communities that have covenants that would allow us to come in and perform service among those communities. So it's the shared communal interest that is the intent and the point of the service that we do provide. And that's based on requests to come and vet and repair correct deficiencies in their existing systems.
Yeah, so the point that I'm making is in those particular cases, there could be responsibilities outside of the municipality of the town, i.e., the county has a responsibility, state has a responsibility as far as the management of the systems. Am I correct in that?
Yes, the DOT is responsible for maintaining the systems in their rights of way and the county as well in their rights of way and dedicated easements. And then the town, which has far less infrastructure, roadways in comparison to DOT and/or the county. But we do the same for our road systems that we're responsible for.
Yeah, but in some cases, they could overlap. And I guess my last question is, how do these agreements differ from communities that are not necessarily planned or official having a, I guess, an official POA or PUD designation?
So the stormwater utility fee is assessed to all the residents of the county. If, when the fees are collected, they either go to Beaufort County to provide service in the areas that they're responsible for. But each municipality, if the fee's collected inside the municipality, less a small administrative fee because the county does collect the fee for us as part of the property tax bill. And then we have that funding available to utilize as we see fit in our community, as long as it's related to stormwater.
Okay, so where I'm going here, Mr. Orlando, is I'm definitely in support of us improving our agreements and our system overall, okay? But having the metric in place so that we are assuring that all communities, planned or non-planned, are receiving the adequate services because they all are paying into this fee, I think is appropriate. And that accounting, at least not to my knowledge, is not necessarily readily available to the public. So I think that's important that we work to go in that direction. You know, this is the trouble with the whole, quote-unquote, limited service government and planned unit developments, right? So I think that's just important for us to be transparent in that degree. By no means am I opposed to these agreements. I just want to make sure that there's an understanding throughout the community that the agreements are simply in place because of the design of the planned unit developments, okay? Not that anyone is getting preferential treatment, okay? And I think that is a misperception here that needs to be cleaned up and it can be cleaned up just by the accounting of the monies being spent equally along the way.
Jeff, I think you should make a comment in response to Alex in the way that you track all the projects, all the maintenance and all the dollars spent out of the fund inside and outside the gated communities.
Yes, so we have an annual budget in which, in addition to the operating expense and staffing that is all paid for out of the Stormwater Utility Fund, we have a certain amount we dedicate to the routine maintenance of the town-owned systems, which is beyond what this more limited service is provided via the drainage agreements. We pay, obviously, anything that's in the town proper or the town's easements that we pay attention to. That's our responsibility to help correct. But then anything that's a deficiency- But then anything that's a deficiency, whether it, the deficiency is reported to us. Whether it's a crushed pipe or a clogged pipe or, you know, causes public safety issue or a flooding issue. We prior receive and vet in the field and prioritize every request and figure out what's wrong and we score it. Based on a real rigorous scoring system. So every, every deficiency has a score if it qualifies for service by the town. And then we rank those and we take care of the highest ones first, highest to lowest. And get as many of those done every year based on the funding that's available to us, what's left over after we take care of the routine maintenance. And the pump stations. And then then the rest of that, we 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 apply evenly based on the priority score alone. Regardless of where it exists. Does that help?
Yeah, that, that, of course, that helps. But where I'm going is being more transparent with the public, okay? Because the planned unit developments are always going to have somebody watching for deficiencies. Where areas outside of planning you develops may not be, okay? So they may not necessarily rise to the top as quickly. So just having that information readily available to the public, I think helps us in the long run. That's it.
I. Councilman Brown, I I know what you're asking for. I'm I'm glad to hear Jeff Netzinger's background on on the accounting and and the use. And I'll take a good look. I had something I haven't really looked deeply at yet in terms of. How we communicate our expenditures. I'll take a look at our website dashboard. And if it's not very clear on there, we'll make sure it is clear.
Thank you, sir.
Are any other questions on this? Okay, one question. Christian, please call the roll.
Certainly, Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Sorry, I was muted again. Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Generation of resolution to adopt a strategic plan for the Office of Cultural Affairs and Arts Council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion by members of the council? Miss Becker?
I have a question in terms of adopting a strategic plan. Is this part of, or should this be part of the strategic plan review? That we will be going over in the coming week?
Counselwoman Becker, yes, as the document was prepared for town council, the draft strategic plan. The town council strategic plan, one of the strategies in the plan itself. Is the implementation of this strategic plan as you're talking about, right? This, this. Arts and culture strategic plan. So what you're ultimately and essentially doing this evening is adopting that strategic plan. And we will be very intentional on the implementation. And of course, the refinement of the plan along the way.
Right, so the, this department does a phenomenal job. History and and the what it brings to the community is amazing and everyone benefits from it. In terms of the implementation and there, there's, I still have questions as I did. In the first presentation of the educational component as it relates to. Going out, in terms of the educational piece, which I asked specifically for curriculums. Just know what it is that the town is supporting and that I have yet to see. So without that, I don't think that I can take a vote on this particular item at this time. I don't want to approve something that may contain educational items that I'm, I'm not comfortable. Suggesting that the town as a whole supports or would support or without a just a further discussion. So that's where I'm at with that.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I don't want any misunderstanding, other than that singular item which I want to tease out and know more about. This is, this is just wonderful for the community and the town benefits as a whole.
Ms. Becker, and I heard those comments as Jen McEwen did at the committee, at the committee meeting. Where this was discussed in depth. And please know, we haven't been external anywhere yet. To even build that curriculum or even think of that curriculum. Upon adoption of the plan, we would build that curriculum and we will work closely with the appropriate committee and with council. Before we are out and about, so to speak. So please know that that note was heard loud and clear. I know there was. Not just one person saying that, but I think the entire committee at the time said that's probably a good thing for us to see and and. Understand. So know that as we build it, we will work with you as a town council and respective committee.
Well, as I see the title, the the title headings. It suggests more to me than I'm comfortable with supporting at this time. So because of that singular item. I'll be objecting at this point.
Any other comments on this?
Yep, Mayor, I I just want to compliment. The arts group and Jen. For the incredible progress that has been made over the last few years. And I think that the strategic plan demonstrates that progress, but also. Is a harbinger of what's going to come. So I'm very enthusiastic with the work that's been done.
Thank you. Alex?
Uh, yeah, I echo Councilman Ames on that that comment. Who who would have ever thought? That a limited service government like the town of Hilton Head would have its own Office of Cultural Affairs, okay? So kudos to those of in the community. They're really pushed for this, okay? And at least in my mind, this is a a prime example. Of what we can accomplish here on Hilton Head, okay? And I want to give a lot of compliments to. To that, to that office and the office of one with Ms. McEwen. But she has really captured. The diversity in our community when it comes to the different type of arts and the different culture. And done it in a very respective way where each of those groups now have. An appreciation for one another, even though they're different. And the community at large has embraced the fact that it is here as one. So for 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 those of us that are not necessarily clear on. What one, one island, one community means, this is an example of it, what this office is doing. So I commend the office, I commend us as a council and continue to support this office. So those are, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Orlando? Yes, congrats to the Office of Cultural Affairs and Arts Council for putting this together, just in in light of the compliments to Jen. Jen was in my office before council today and I asked her, are you good? How are you? She said, how could I be anything less than great? I've got the best job on the island. So. Congrats to her and 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 we're fortunate to have her.
Okay, with that, Christian, can you make the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Ames?
Presounding yes.
Mrs. Becker?
But because of caveat that I spoke of before, I'm going to abstain from the vote. And look forward to the teasing out of the details of the strategic fan. And yes, one island, one community is well represented on Hilton Head Island. We know what it means.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes, with enthusiasm.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries with one abstention, sir.
We have a five o'clock meeting on public hearing and first reading of. The mitigation plan. What I'd like to do now, because it's not five o'clock, is skip right over to our executive session. So with that, I need a motion to withdraw executive session until five o'clock.
Executive session for the reasons set forth by the mayor.
Second, you got a second on that?
Sure.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Christian, could you bring us into executive session?
Yes, sir. Give me just one second, please.
Okay, five o'clock, it'd be public hearing and first reading of proposal ordinance twenty one dash seventeen. Of the twenty twenty low country hazard mitigation plan. Of the motion to to discuss this. Okay, where's Phil?
Okay. I made the motion.
Thank you, Glenn. I appreciate it. Need a second?
A second.
That's wonderful. Discussion by the members of the council on this here. This is item F on the agenda. That says public hearing. Christian, is there anybody signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir. Nobody signed up today to speak on this item on the agenda.
Okay, there's no discussion by council. Christian, will you go for the vocal?
Is this still proof of the item, sir? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, my apologies. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Uh, Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes, this, this had a full vetting in the Public Planning Committee, yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
And Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
And Mayor McCann?
Yes.
First reading carries, sir.
Thank you. Now we go back to executive session. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Okay, Christian, we're going back to executive sessions.
Yes, sir. All right, you're good to go, sir.
And we're out of executive session. We have one item to report on. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, I I do not have the copy yet, so. Hand it to somebody else, please.
I move to approve resolution of the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, temporarily suspending the collection. Of the town's road usage fee as codified in the town of Hilton Island. Code avoidance is section four eleven, ten to four eleven ninety. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I comment, the word temporarily is probably unnecessary. Can't you suspend and then? I, to me, that sounded. Unnecessary under these circumstances.
I will remove the word temporarily. South Carolina is suspending the collection of the town's road usage fee.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on it? Christian, please make the roll call.
Oh, I think current pass was, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. You have a question, Alex?
No, I. I think that in order for your honor to make the motion, don't you have to hand the chair to someone else?
Phil, you got the chair, okay?
Okay.
Okay, can we read again?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah. Or I can, or I can help with the motion. I can state the motion aloud and somebody could make it.
I move to approve a resolution for the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, suspending the collection of the town's road usage fee. As codified in town film, that's code of ordinances, section four eleven, ten to four eleven ninety.
Is there a motion to accept?
And a second?
Is there a second?
Any discussion?
Krista, would you do a roll call, please?
Uh, certainly, sir. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
I like a motion to withdraw the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much, everybody else. Talk to you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
You too.